Who do we have on the line?
That was Conservation District, I'm filling in for Mark for Agenda item 7.13.
Thank you.
We're in, uh, Jase, New York.
Jessica Seagrave.
David Smith.
Thank you. Hi, who just joined?
My turn, Mr. Sheriff, I'm on board in case there are any questions about the furniture.
Roger.
I'll ask my Michelle there if, uh, if, uh, there's any questions she can answer that I can't.
Yep.
Hey, good morning, everyone. We ask you to please rise for opening prayer and pledge of allegiance before we convene the commissioners of public meetings. Dear heavenly fathers, as we close another year in the seasons of life, we ask you to continue to sustain us each day. We witnessed many difficulties and challenges over this past year, but we know your love, grace, hope, and wisdom is there for us. We know that every moment of time is in your hands. We are thankful, as we present the final budget today, that you've provided the means for our county. We ask you for the wisdom going forward that we always make the decisions that are in accordance with your will. We pray for the new year to be one of your blessings showering upon us. May our words and actions make a positive and encouraging impact to others. We ask you for your guidance throughout this meeting. Amen.
Okay, who is our director? Yes, some additions?
I did, and, um, I'm gonna also read an additional piece to one of those revisions that's not on, printed on your document.
Okay.
So, seeking your approval for additions, revisions to Agenda not previously posted. First, add action item 7.4, go to approve the appointment of Brett Bose to the Lycoming County Planning Commission Board. Two, revise the salary board actions, 5.0, there's a revised attachment date. And then, with that revision, I would like to add, approve the retroactive overtime rate for those law enforcement officers providing inmate hospital detail over the Christmas holiday. Three, revise the TDA actions, 6.0, and there's a revised attachment date.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to the agenda.
You second what?
I'll second the motion, but I'd like to comment.
Yes.
So, on, um, the appointment to the boards.
Yes.
How many, how many seats are open there? How many positions are open to the planning?
There's currently, from what I saw, one vacant slot, and that was Linda Sosnia.
Yes.
For the coming 2023, or, that's, I, that's my question.
Right, right now, I know there's only one vacant position. There are terms that expire at the end of this year, but have been extended for one year. Previous.
Okay, because there, there, we, we've got the recommendations to the plans.
Yes.
Uh, for Brett.
Correct.
There are also two or three other candidates that put their resumes in, um, seeking the position, but I wasn't sure whether it was for 2022 replacement of Linda or whether it was going into the 2023. I know a couple, I know a couple of these people, and I'm sure Brett is, is gonna be a great addition, but these other two also have, three, have some awesome qualifications that I, I think should be considered. We, we didn't really discuss it.
We didn't really discuss it. You know, it's possible that the planning commission didn't see the applications that came to our office
Oh.
of people who had applied, because they come via our office, and I'm not sure whether they always get rounded down there. It might, it might make sense to hold it, to table it, and we can do it in January. It's not as though there's gonna be a big detrimental. I, I think there is some point that you're making that people who have applied through the process.
Right.
Should be considered through the process. And I would recommend if we add it, whether we still add it, but if we want to table it, we table it. Right, yeah. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's probably a prudent thing to do, at least to find out whether they look and saw these other applications.
Okay, on their side?
Aye. This is to add the items to the agenda. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Carrie. Okay, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting and a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second?
On their side, aye, so Carrie.
Okay, a public comment on Agenda items own.
Morning.
John Sharman, Jersey Shore. I'd like to go over some comments made about the wages concerning what the cost of county every year for, for employees. We stated that $60,000 we spend on each employee for wages and benefits. If you divide that down by, by 52, that's $1,153 per week. And if you divide that further down by 40, that makes it out to 2885 per hour. 25885 times an eight-hour day is $230 per day per employee. So, in the end, when you're going to put 40 employee, county employees to recount votes, it's gonna cost you $9,200 a day to do the recount. And if it's 17 days, business days, which is between Sep- January the 9th and the end of, the end of the month, that's 17 days, that roughly comes out to about $157,000. That we're paying people. I think these figures have been around, it could have been put together, because I simply put them together within about 10 minutes after reading the Harrisburg paper in your comment, Scott, about 40 employees. But, so I don't think the 50 to 60,000 dollars is quite accurate with the figures that I do have. And if it's time and a half, it could run, running 17 days, with the time and a half of the 28, uh, 2885 I stated, that could run as a highest, almost $230,000 if you go the full 17 days. And I really do question, being that I've read in the paper about these, um, we've had with the county controller, Mrs. Rogers. I just wonder how legal it is, being that the judges have ruled against transferring employees from the county controller's office, how legal it would be for it to take 40 employees from the county and take them and dislocate them for three weeks into another position that they really shouldn't be doing. Thank you. Thank you.
When you say another position, you mean the counting of the ballots?
Yeah.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting question.
Matt, so you're involved in this. Um, they're gonna be counting the ballots when?
Uh, beginning on 9:00.
Thank you.
What, at what time?
Regular hours.
Okay, and, and so, I didn't bring that up. It's reallocating our personnel. We're paying them regardless. But we're gonna be paying them regardless.
It's still on the count of what's going on, Tony.
It's not going to cost the taxpayers what I said it was, but I did break it down that way so that you understood that in the whole scheme of things, you're talking about 50 cents a person in Lycoming County.
That's 50 cents of my money I don't want to spend.
So let me clarify that. These people are working, and they're gonna be getting paid regardless of what we.
That's not what I, that's not what I.
Excuse me, John, he's speaking. Don't interrupt him, please. You had your opportunity to speak. Commissioner's speaking. Go ahead.
And, and I really, I really believe, um, that this is a great exercise in understanding the entire process. We have already learned a number of things about recounting these votes and the way you set it up. And it's just an educational component alone on how many people don't vote correctly. And then you saw it in the presentation, where they're writing the person's name in, or they're checking over two, they think their votes are counting. They're not counting. If you don't fill in the circle and you don't stay within that circle, your vote doesn't count. And there are many of them that don't count. So, just in that aspect alone, I learned a lot from this, from what I saw, uh, for us put together. So, um, I think just, just the educational component of running this exercise is enough.
So, just to follow up on what the constituent brought to our attention, because I actually was crunching some numbers after I heard the comment and read the paper that it's gonna cost 50,000. I think the $50,000 is absolutely impossible. Um, it's gonna be much higher than that. And I think there, there are two things that came to my mind over the last couple of days. One is that I, I did a similar kind of analysis of 37 and a half hours per week, and I come up with $30.77 per hour times 40 employees. We're, we're spending about $9,231 a day. The, the question we have to ask ourselves is, do we have the ability to take 40 employees away from their regular duties for three weeks to perform a job? Or are those employees going, if that's the case, then we are really, really overstaffed in some departments. And I don't wanna say we're overstaffed, because I know that we're struggling in every department. So, are we gonna end up then with those employees getting back to their normal duties and doing it at time and a half, which is gonna get buried in a budget somewhere that we won't necessarily see? It'll be an overtime budget. And if, and if that's the case, we haven't budgeted for this. I don't think in our budget that we're discussing today, we have a line item that says recount ballots, overtime possibility. And, uh, the number that, that the constituent put out, I, I came up with a, with a number of around 207,000 if it's done at overtime. So, the point, listen, the board voted, the Board of Elections voted to do it, but the responsible thing for us to do is to put it in the budget and to identify it as a line item. And if it's identified as overtime, it's identified as overtime. Because otherwise, what we're doing is we're kinda doing something without taking accountability. I mean, one of the other issues that I know we're running into is that some of the departments are not saying they can spare people, right?
That's, that's, so far, at least from our knowledge, that there is only 20 employees that signed up. Now, there may be more now. I don't know.
Right. Yeah, and that may be because they're really, really busy, right? And that's probably, and so we're, we're probably short. So that means the process may take longer, the cost will still be the same, but there's an even greater chance that it goes into overtime.
Well, we have to look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I think though, I guess today when we're voting on the budget, we need to point that out, and I, I thank the constituents for bringing it to our attention.
I agree with that.
Well, I, I differ from both, both you gentlemen. The responsible thing is not to throw numbers out that we don't have facts on, okay? And, um, you can, you can do your estimations.
That's what it is.
That's what it is. Okay, when I see a headline across the newspaper, who wants to sell papers that says it's gonna cost up to $60,000, there's no proof of that. There's no proof of that. Right now, we have our employees, every election day, every primary day, they leave their offices, they go upstairs, and they open up the mail-in ballots. And they complete that by noon. This is Forrest giving us process. He asked for up to 40 employees. That did come from me. That came from the Director of Voter Services. It said that he would like to have up to 40 employees. If he has 20 employees, he'll go with 20 employees, and he'll make it work. It just might take a little bit longer. But we don't know if it's gonna take two days, two weeks, or three weeks. What we do know is it'll be done properly. We'll have a recount. We can put this to bed once and for all, and then we can release the responsible numbers, because we'll know exactly what they are at that time. And then if they're up, above 200,000, then you may be right, Commissioner, but the drug numbers, which I see often happen here, without any proof, is irresponsible.
But when do we ever do anything in the county without calculating the cost first?
I understand that.
That, to me, is irresponsible. To, to, to say we're gonna proceed on something without knowing the cost, to me, is, is irresponsible and, and probably negligent.
Commissioner, we're involved in a lawsuit right now, and we don't know the cost. Legal fees keep going up.
Listen, I can, I can add something to this equation. We had in this, in this conference room, many times, we had 50, 60, 70 people at these meetings. And many times, and you cannot deny this, we had the public say, "I'll volunteer. It doesn't cost you anything." And yet, we elected not to do so. So, don't put the blame just darned that. We can use volunteers that will charge us absolutely nothing, that I'm sure are competent, that can follow instructions.
We can't, we can't use volunteers, because there are laws regulating the custody and control of ballots.
That's an option. Why? I didn't see that, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
The people who work the polls are elected. The, they, they, they are elected.
They volunteered.
No, but it's different with employees.
These people wanna volunteer.
Okay, well, it's different with employees.
Commissioner, it's, it's very alarming when we saw the presentation that, I'm sure there's people out there that did that process, and their votes aren't counting, because they didn't check it properly, or they didn't circle, make the circle.
I, no, I saw the presentation too, but that has nothing to do with recounting ballots. If we think we need to do an education for our constituents, then we meet with the Director of Elections and we say, "Look, over the course of the next two years, plan to do some outreach in the community." But that, that doesn't mean grabbing 40 employees and having them count ballots. The only point is this, we should budget for it. We should budget, and if it comes in less than 207,000. But we certainly shouldn't just proceed into it without anything in the budget for it. That, to me, doesn't seem to make sense, but, all right. Let's keep moving on with it.
We have another.
Oh, another public comment, okay.
Morning, Jack.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jack McKernan, Williamsport. Just a, a comment on the, uh, salary board actions on attachment B. The prison, I know that's always been a issue with you on the staffing, and I think it's, uh, interesting that you're thinking out of the box in a big way for retention and referrals. My only concern might be, with it being a union organization, and I do think the, the contract's either coming up real soon or maybe next year, that you have plenty of discussion with the union prior to instituting this, that they do understand that, uh, by the looks of it, it's to be approved on a quarterly basis. And I would almost suggest that, uh, the wording not be approved on a quarterly basis. I'd, I'd word it that it terminates on March 30th, 30th of next year. And unless it's approved again at a meeting, that it, and, and it doesn't really say, is the approval for the retention, the referral, or the overtime shift increase? Or, you know, is it for just the one, or is it all three of those items? I, I just think I would try to be as specific as you can be on that. Cause somehow, and somehow you have to, to fix the shortage there. The other comment that I had was on the magistrate's office, that really, it looks like everybody's getting upgraded to pay grade. And I, I didn't know, and I, I, I don't need an answer, but if, if in doing this, if someone is hired now in the magistrate's office, do they still start at, uh, the pay grades that, that are in existence? Or are they gonna start at these new pay grades that everybody's getting bumped to? And I'm assuming that all of this is figured into the, the budget for next year that you're working on.
Yeah, so Jack.
And, um, just one other item, the public meeting that is tomorrow is for wages for 2024 going forward.
Correct, yeah. Let me answer your two questions. The first is, um, the prisons, many prisons are in crisis mode, federal, state, county prisons, trying to locate employees. These recommendations are coming out of the prison board, and, um, there, there's a situation where the staffing is, is, we need to make sure we have enough staff there. So, um, these are, these are ways to keep the staff there, retention. Several are being hired, being hired away to the state. So, um, this is a way to keep our staff retained and also bring in new staffs in. So, these are recommendations coming from the prison board to the commissioners for us to consider today. The second thing with the, with the magistrate salaries, the courts process, yes?
I just wanted to add on the union, your union, uh, comment. Uh, the solicitor and I had a lengthy discussion with the ASME representative specifically about these issues, or these actions, and they're on board with us to do so.
This, this contract has not been ratified.
No, we're still in negotiations.
So we should not.
Yeah, we're in negotiations right now.
Okay.
So, and the second thing was, the courts process, a proposal to upgrade their clerical staff, it had not been done since 2002. Uh, we looked at it, uh, we made adjustments from what the courts originally wanted. We were able to, to give them the bump, but at the same time bring the cost down $53,000 over what they originally proposed. So, if we would've gave the courts exactly what they wanted, it would've cost the taxpayers $53,000 more dollars. By us adjusting it and bringing the proposal back and voting on that, the magistrate's secretary's clerical staff is, is receiving the bump that they have not had since 2002.
So, would you be eliminating the lower pay grade from, um?
Basically, basically what they're doing is each office has three clerical. There's two that are going up one pay grade. The one would be like an office manager, going up two pay grades to supervise the office, and then there's one of the 18, cause there's six magistrates. There's one of the 18 that goes from a five to a seven, who oversees the entire, the entire magistrate district. So, it's reorganization, at the same time, it's, it's adjusting something that hasn't been adjusted in 20 years.
And I really didn't intend to say this, but since it came up somewhere along the way here. I fully support the commissioners, uh, in their effort to overturn the judge's ruling for the controller, and that's my comment.
Okay, thank you for coming. Yes, go ahead.
Thomas Adams. Good morning, Commissioners, Matt, and everyone present online, in person, and whatever other way. I hope everyone is having a great Christmas season, and if not, may our prayers be with you. I regret not being there in person. Thank you for your dedicated work and for caring about our county, and I really appreciate the Commissioners standing by your convictions, whether or not we agree. Hopefully, we are able to keep our eyes on the Word of God to allow Him to guide us in a correct and moral way. I think the recount should be viewed as a special project which happens from time to time. Correct. I volunteer to count without paying. I believe we have enough volunteers to fill gaps within full role and control as supervisors. It's time for local governance to stand against the, the state and federal bullying and attacking the constitutional voice of the people. Silencing us by color of law, twisting it to strange contortions law via the PA Department of State, working with taxpayer funds to, and that's what it is.
Anything further?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to bid openings. Krista?
Morning. Good morning. The bulletproof bid, we didn't have any bidders on. I think there were two bids listed. I didn't bring my agenda up with me. Um, these are on the X-ray imaging system, and I'm not gonna read the total price, because each bidder gave you options of a two, three, four, or five-year warranty, and so the total price includes all those prices. So I'll give you, first of all, we have L-I-N-E-V Systems, U.S. Incorporated. The bid price for the imaging system installation, freight, are inclusive, is 26, 656, 61. Do you want the prices of all warranties, Red?
I, I would.
Okay. The two-year warranty is $3,000. The three-year warranty is $3,000. The four-year warranty is $3,000, and the five-year warranty is $3,000.
So wait, they're warranting, they're charging the same price whether we want.
That's what this is, yeah.
Do a warranty for two years and five years.
That, that's, that's just.
This bidder.
3,000.
Per each of those warranties.
Oh, it's 3,000 per year, I bet. 3,000 per year, so two years.
Oh, it's 3,000 per year, I bet. 3,000 per year, so two years is six years, three years is 9,000. It's got to be, because otherwise, they're charging the same warranty.
I don't know the wording in the bid document, so I'm not sure.
Right, okay.
So.
So, the total would be right, then?
3,000 a year.
That doesn't make sense.
But if it is that, then the total is right.
Warranties in an annual.
Yeah, I've never heard of that.
I've never heard of that.
Well, no, they're saying if you take it for two years, it's probably-
It's 3,000 bucks.
-per year, 3,000 per year, so 6,000.
Well, one year is included in the price, I believe, the original price?
I'll have to look.
The X-ray system, de-manufacture and disposal of hazardous materials is $1,500. If what you're saying is the case, the total would be right, so it would be 40,156.61 in that case.
So, wait, that's the LINEV systems?
Yes.
You read, it was 26,656 dollars-
Just for the unit.
For the unit.
I thought you said was inclusive.
That was inclusive of shipping and installation.
Okay.
So, so if I, if I took those numbers and-
For the total?
That's 33% warranty, if I took it out to the three years. That's 33%.
The next bidder is Auto Clear LLC, and their warranties are the same price each year, too, so I'm thinking what you're saying is probably correct. But the unit inclusive of installation and freight is 18,200. The warranty, two, three, four, and five are each 3,500, and the X-ray system, de-manufacture and disposal of hazardous materials is 1,200. Their total is 33,400.
Are we getting anything confused between a warranty and a service contract?
It says warranty on here, but I don't know what the bidding document specifically says. It says warranty, extended warranty with PMI.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's a service contract, then that's a whole different thing.
Now, this-
Sounds like it's, you're going to need certain types of services on it.
This one has an escalating price for each warranty, so I, this is why I didn't think the totals were correct. This is from Access Control Systems Incorporated. The unit is 38,290 and 97 cents. Two-year warranty is 4,043.75. Three-year is 8,318.75. Four-year is 11,721.25, and five-year is 14,700. And then the de-manufacture and disposal of hazardous materials is 1,0230 and 38 cents. And that, if you totaled all that, it's 78,695.10. Sorry, I was confused, so I thought I should read it all.
Okay, so they, they range from 33 to 39%.
But I think those first two are inclusive, you would have to include all those warranties. This last one, I think you would only include the five-year warranty if that's what you wanted.
Well, we'll have to do it now.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to reports. Kaylin, you approve the Council's Pay-Attention Department's report?
Morning, Kaylin.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Presented for your ratification are invoices due through December 31st that were paid on December 23rd in the amount of $2,161,269.25. The breakdown is as follows, with 62.38% being funded by the General Fund at $1,358,327.80. 0.64% was funded by grants and other sources at $13,833.55. 34.27% was funded by RMS at $746,271.18, and 2.72% was funded by escrow at $59,165.66.
Okay, thank you. I have a quick question for you. Up top, you say the breakdown is 2,161. In the memo you gave us, and then in the bottom you say-
I see that.
Yeah. Well, so, one of them, if we add up the bottom, it adds up to 2,177.
Yeah, I brought, I brought their own printout from my office. You guys have the correct one. I have that. I brought.
Oh, that's okay. That's all right, Kaylin, so.
Kaylin, it's happened.
It happened, yeah, it happened to all of us.
It's been a very long week.
Because you're pretty much had like half hour for-
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a rough one.
I know. So, which, which-
The 2,161 is the one that, the 2,161,269.25, that is the actual amount. That's what was sent around for you guys to approve with signatures, and that's, that's what was paid.
And that's what we're voting on.
Yep.
Thanks a lot.
Sorry about that.
That's a problem.
No problem.
Take our motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All clear, sir.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you, Kaylin.
Moving on to personnel actions. Jessica?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Josh.
Good morning, Director. I am seeking approval for the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to successful completion of a background check and other employment conditions. We have quite the list here. For the prison, Julie Morlock for three, full-time replacement, her pay rate will be 15, 16 per hour, and she's anticipated to start on January 9. Also for the prison, Alex, Alexandra Medford, CO relief position, full-time replacement at $20 per hour. She's anticipated to start on January 9. Also for the prison, Eliza Alexander, a CO one relief position, full-time replacement at $20 per hour, also anticipated to start on January 9. For the prison, Gina Blackstone, CO one relief, full-time replacement at $20 per hour, and she's anticipated to start on January 16. Michaela Smith for the prison, a correctional counselor, full-time replacement at 25.75 per hour, and she is anticipated to start on January 16. In the Commissioner's office, Mary, Mary Rose Neenan, administrative coordinator, full-time replacement. The salary for this position is 38,526.15 per year. The anticipated start date is January 9. For the procurement department, Tina is transitioning into the procurement and grant officer position. She's transferring January 8, and her salary will be 40,404.00 per year. At RMS, we are transitioning some of the temporary staff that we had on, at the Roberts Company to county employment. So, these last couple are for that purpose. So, we're transitioning Taylor Budman, equipment operator slash mower, is a part-time position at $17 per hour, and that transition took place on December 27. Kaye Dricke, grounds crew mower, part-time position at $14 per hour, and that transition will take, or took place today. Also for RMS, Tierney Dricke, a floating custodian for RMS, part-time position at 14.50 an hour, and that transition took place today as well. Also for RMS, Zachary Weiler, equipment operator, CBL position at $18 an hour, and that transition took place today as well. And then for the DA's office, special detective, central processing, a part-time replacement at 18.80 per hour, and he or she will start on January 2nd.
So, just to follow up with what you pointed out, but so the public understands, all of those RMS positions are positions that we had been paying an outside agency to provide for us. And that's correct, right, Ms. Seagre?
That's correct, yes, yes. We were, we were paying them through the Roberts Company, and the Roberts Company had decided that they were ending their contract with the county effective December 24. So, all of those employees that were working for us under the Roberts Company are going to transition to county employment now, and the cost that we are paying for them is significantly less as well, ranging anywhere from 10% to 20%, a lower cost for us transitioning them to county employment.
So, it's sort of a fortuitous situation that they decided to get out of the providing labor for RMS places? And actually, it may help us in terms of maybe a longer-term commitment or?
Yeah, I think it might help us to solidify somebody that, you know, may be full-time staff eventually, so I think, I think it's a good transition for us.
Okay, thank you. You have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All clear, sir. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Okay, at this time, we'll recess the Commissioners' public meeting for the Salary Board, and we'll continue the Salary Board. Jess?
Yes. So, I have a couple items here for the Salary Board, for the prison, implement the following staffing initiatives, and we will look at this one, one quarter at a time. So, for the corrections officers who voluntarily work an overtime shift, will be paid a $100 bonus in addition to the compensation that they would receive for working overtime. I'm not sure if you want me to, if we want to, how you want me, do you want me to read them all?
Yeah, let's go through, like, we'll go through the prison, and then we'll address that, and the courts, and we'll just, one at a time.
Okay, that's good. So, then, also for the, is somebody talking?
Nope, you're good.
Oh, okay. Also, for the prison, the referral program, any current staff member who refers a person for hire for a full-time CO position will be paid $500 if that person remains employed in a full-time status for six months. Then, if that employee remains employed for 12 months, the staff member that referred them would receive an additional $500. And then, in addition, a retention recruitment bonus that we would offer to all new hires and our current staff, they would have the opportunity to voluntarily opt into this and receive a $1,500 for new hires or a $2,000 for current employee bonus in exchange for a one-year commitment to work for the county in a CO position. And the way that this would work is we would have an agreement prepared by our Solicitor's Office, and they would work off the bonus one-twelfth each month that they are here. And again, we would be looking to pursue this on a quarterly basis, so at the end of this first quarter, we would evaluate, you know, how we're doing and whether or not we'd want to continue offering this for another quarter.
So.
And then the last item under the prison that is a little bit unrelated to the above items, but the approve the officers identified in the court order as special county detectives, which were assigned for the inmate security detail through December 31st of this year. Excuse me, December 31st of 2023.
Excuse us, the ability to address future situations with outside bond.
Yeah, Commissioner?
So, you know, on the outside, if I wasn't involved in any of these meetings, I'd say to Commissioners, out of your minds, okay? That's what I would say on a personal basis. But knowing from the inside what is expiring, what's happening with the prison, and it's just not our prison, it's across the nation, we need to do something. We need to put a tourniquet on this situation, this, we have to come up with creative solutions to staff our prison. You saw just last week how much was it going to cost us just to bring an inmate to the hospital for the protection of everyone, all right? It was not cheap, and especially over the holiday season. So, it seems like an awful lot of money to me, but in the end, we need to start to fix this problem now, and we're not even sure if this is going to work, okay? But we will do everything in our power to help provide some type of normalcy to the employees of the prison, the management over there, and, and this is just one of the ideas, or many of the ideas, and we'll, we'll see how it works.
I want to thank the, the Ward-
Commissioner, there is one item that we added in the beginning that was not printed on the back here.
Okay.
And that was additionally to approve the retroactive triple time for law enforcement who covered the inmate hospital details over the Christmas holiday, week, long weekend, which was 22 December to 27 December, at an approximate cost of $14,000.
Okay. And I want to thank the Ward and the Deputy Wardens and the Prison Board. We've had numerous meetings about how to tackle this problem, and there's been some great ideas thrown out. We've had to think outside the box. The Ward has, has talked to other Wardens across the state about what they're experiencing and problems to try to solve, ways to try to solve their problems, and if they can be applied to our county prison. And so, it's been a collective effort to get this crisis solved, and it's, it's a team approach. So, I want to thank each one of those members for bringing the ideas to us so that we can continue to tackle this problem that we've been addressing for quite some time through meetings.
So, Jessica, in number two, where it says any current staff member, that means any member of the county staff, right? It's not just-
Correct, any-
Any employee of the county who refers someone. So, if you're, you know, doesn't, I wanted to point out, it's not limited to prison staff. So, this is an effort by us to marshal 550 full-time people to go out there and find good candidates. And we always find typically that when people refer a candidate, there's more of a sense internally of commitment, because you, you know, your friend or your relative referred you, you don't want to let them down, right? You, you want to do a good job. So, that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Can I tag on that?
Yeah, yeah.
But it's only for hires in the CO positions, or it's any full-time position throughout the county?
COs.
Okay, because that doesn't say that here, so we need to be careful that we-
You're right. We need to, we need to insert that words.
Correct.
Yes, correctional officer.
Thank you.
To hire a full-time position as a correctional officer.
Yep.
That's a good question.
Good point, Krista. Thank you for-
And I would even take it a step further and say where it says remains employed in that position, because they could come in here and transfer to another one and say, well, I still work for the county.
Yeah, remains employed as a full-time correctional officer, right?
Okay, great. Yep.
Well, go ahead, I just wanted to-
Production.
Yep, so you're going to add those two things, right? So, the other thing, just so the public understands, and in jumping off of what Commissioner Mussera said, part of our challenge is that we are mandating overtime. We've talked about this at numerous meetings. People come into work as a correctional officer, and they find out that they have to stay, right, because there's no one to cover for them. So, part of the number one of giving the bonus if they volunteer for overtime, because someone might say, well, jeez, that's crazy, they're paying 100 bucks to volunteer for overtime. But the point is that if people get control of their life and were able to plan out overtime, they're not going to get mandated. And not getting mandated makes all the difference in the world. Imagine if you went into work today and you were told you have to stay another shift, and then you got eight hours and you got to be back to your shift the next day. That wreaks havoc on families and on relationships.
And you have to go pick up your kids, you have to make arrangements to somebody to pick up their kids.
Right. Even people that don't have kids, that they had, they were going to meet the person to fix the heating system, or they were going to feed their dog, or whatever. So, yeah, right, Commissioner, absolutely. So, part of that is we're trying to get control back in the hands of people's lives. And we think that if we do that, it'll help be able to solve some of the crisis, because it'll get us to the point where we're not mandating, and then people won't be leaving. They're leaving because they're mandated.
And I want to thank the, the employees and, and covered the shifts over the hospital, or at the hospital over the holidays, over the Christmas holiday specifically. You know, they'll be out there on Christmas Eve, be out there on Christmas, and because we didn't have staff to go out to the hospital with, that inmate, which cannot be released, it's a very serious charge, and so, with that said, it was supposed to be through the end of the year, and the inmate was released back to the prison, I believe, yesterday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, so it didn't go as long as we anticipated. Still, it came with a heavy price tag, but there's a situation where we, the courts could not release that inmate, and we had responsibility to make sure that he was guarded. And we want to thank the people that stepped up with late, sheriffs and other law enforcement agencies that helped with that crisis.
I think it's also important to recognize that our courts and the warden, they do work together to try to prevent taxpayers from spending money on healthcare for inmates, you know? If it wasn't that type of person.
Yeah, they do an excellent job of that.
This was a violent person, and so we needed to do that. But it does send a message to us anyway that we need our legislators to change some of the current laws, and when someone is arrested, and, you know, it could be a minor offense, whatever, they get arrested and they're put on the grill, we are, we have the custody of that person, and regardless of whether they have healthcare or not, their healthcare doesn't count. It goes onto the taxpayers, and it doesn't make any sense if you're on medical assistance, why doesn't medical assistance pay for this? This is, these are not small numbers, these are huge numbers that the county taxpayers, you pay for everything, penny for penny, whatever is spent, whether it's prescriptions or whether it's, you know, a heart attack, it doesn't matter, cancer, and just because they're under our custody, their insurance no longer applies if they have it, and there are many cases that do, so.
From working next door, the courts recognize that they're very good at making sure that if they can avoid that cost, they will. But when you have a serious offender or a serious charge, they don't have that liberty.
I think, you're right, the judges and the DA work with the wardens, yeah.
No, and to follow up on Commissioner Metzger's point, that the prison board is made up of the comptroller, president judge, district attorney, three commissioners, the sheriff. All of us worked together to try to figure out how do we solve the problem over Christmas, but also the bigger problem of how do we get staff stabilized? And obviously, the warden, deputy warden, our director, and everyone else was helpful with bringing pieces together, you know, but it is a collective effort.
Including HR.
Including HR, absolutely. Miss Seagre.
Before any motions are made on the retention and recruiting bonus, just for clarification, is that, again, any county employee will have the option to sign an agreement and have a bonus paid, or are those only for CO, full-time COs that are hired?
I think it's full-time COs.
And I think it needs to be very much clarified.
Yes.
So where it says staff, we'll say full-time correctional officers.
And I don't know if you had considered what Jack McKernan had said about, instead of saying approved on a quarterly basis, saying this ends March 31st, 2023, and will be brought for reconsideration for continuation?
I think that's a good suggestion, because it makes it very, it makes it very clear. So this ends on March 31st, 2023, and obviously, it's up to us to decide whether to reconsider, but the point is to try to generate some interest.
Right.
I think the other reason that Commissioner, former Commissioner McKernan might have said that is so that we, and we're going to obviously do an MOU with the union, but so we don't get into some situation with the union where they, this goes on and then they claim they're entitled to have it go on.
Right.
So it has, by having a definite termination date, it clears up any.
Ninety days is a good one, that's what state emergency declarations are, the ninety days.
Right.
If you can extend it then.
Right. So we added that, we'll change that.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Take a night of motion.
I'll move to approve, you want to make the motion? I'll move to approve the items listed in the agenda that have been discussed about the correctional staff at the prison, including the bonus referral program, retention recruiting bonus, the termination in March 31st, 2023, the special detectives being assigned for inmate security detail, that goes through December 31st, 2023, and the retroactive triple time for law enforcement detail.
With the corrections that are made.
With the corrections that are made, yep.
Okay, can I have a second?
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I would just, again, reiterate, I know, I've been in the discussions, I understand what we're doing, I understand what we're trying to do, but we expand this without, I know one of these does include all county employees, but you have county employees that have worked through COVID, that have done so much and that are still struggling to fill positions, so that is one issue that I have. And the other reason I couldn't make a motion is I don't have a court order that, to review on that one item, and I don't feel comfortable without knowing the detail.
Which one, the triple?
No, the court order on this, there's, oh, on the special detective.
And I think as a point of clarification, comptroller, we should put draft court order.
Okay, that's fine.
I've seen it, it's just not through the process.
Understood.
It's similar in structure and wording to our other court orders that we use with DUI.
DUI check.
I usually see them before I vote, that's all.
No, that's a good, that's a good point.
It's a blank.
And I don't know if you want to clarify for the minutes that it is a draft?
Yeah, we should, we will clarify that it is a draft.
Okay, all three say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, carry three one. Okay, Jess, next, courts?
Yes, so reclassification for the court, the clerk three position is going to be retitled to district court administrative specialist, it's going to change from a pay grade four to a pay grade five, and this will affect the following employees, Stacy Aldinger, Carleen Bauer, Morgan Schuler, Michelle Cuff, Erica Grimes, Erica Heeman, Yvonne Heller, Sophie Lauer, Mara Person, Lindsay Sowers, and Tanya Smith. And I apologize again if I mispronounced any of those names. Also, for the court, the clerk four position will be retitled to district court supervisor, changing from a pay grade five to a pay grade six, and this will affect Amy Green, Danielle Erga, Dorothy Harland, Shelby Miller, and Catherine Winder. And then, one of the clerk four positions is going to be updated to the court, district court lead supervisor position, and that will change from a pay grade five to a pay grade seven, and that will affect Michelle Person. And these will all be effective for January 8th pay period.
Okay, thank you. So these are the positions that the courts brought to us from the Magisterial District. These individuals work extremely hard, they keep, they keep the offices going, they're the bloodline of the Magisterial District. And so as we looked at these positions that had not been upgraded since 2002, the courts brought us a proposal, we looked at it, we definitely needed to address it, address it, but what we did was, we addressed it, gave the bump that we felt was fair and appropriate, at the same time, we were able to save $53,000 over the original proposal brought to us by the court. So we want to thank each one of these employees, they work extremely hard, this is a bump in their salary which is needed, it's long overdue, and we want to thank each magistrate, they work with us, each one of the judges, and we received a nice thank you from Justice Solomon, their date, thanking us for addressing this, and we want to thank him for reaching out to us also. Oh, absolutely, and they're down, they're down at magistrate right now, magistrate Kemp had retired, so they've been going back and forth down to East Lake Humming, Newsville area, and running down there, providing coverage. And so basically, you have three clerks in each office, one's kind of like the office manager over there, two clerks, and then the lead supervisor will be over basically all the clerks of the different departments of the train going forward, so, again, thank you to each one of the clerks. Administrative assistants are definitely needed there, they work so hard, not just in these departments, but every department. If you go around the different departments in the county, they don't have downtime, they're constantly working, and it's not easy work, they deal with the public, often the public is not appreciative or pleasant, and so they have to handle that also, and their daily duties, and which is an easy task, so we want to thank them.
Jessica, do you know off the top of your head what the lowest paid hourly rate was that's being upgraded here?
I do not, I'm sorry.
Were some of them in the range of 13 an hour? Well, the point, the point, I think some of them were in the range of 13 an hour, and the point I'm making is that a 37 and a half hour week, it's a salary of $25,350 a year. It doesn't even get close to what the median income is, and probably makes them eligible for various programs. This is not, you know, this isn't going to make them millionaires tomorrow, but the point is, it helps move people towards a decent standard of living. And, again, it's competing for jobs and competing for employees, and it's probably definitely been something that's worth, been worth. They've been waiting, this should have been done a while ago, as the commissioner said it since 2002, but we're doing it, so that's good.
Absolutely, we're addressing it.
We're addressing it, yeah.
Okay.
Got a motion?
Got a motion.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All three say aye?
Okay, is there a room for discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to ask if we know off.
Apologize.
That's okay, thank you. Top of our heads, how many clerk three and clerk four positions are left in the county that need to be looked at?
Jess?
This is something to know that we're looking at.
I know.
Jess, do you know?
It is, it is, I don't know off the top of my head, I don't know off the top of my head, but it is something that we're looking at for the rest of the clerical staff around the county.
Yeah, it needs to be addressed.
And just, just to Jack's comment, if someone is, like, if someone vacates one of these positions, they will be hired at these new rates with these new titles. So I just wanted to make sure that was on the record somewhere, too.
Yeah, and actually, you raise a good point. If you notice, the titles are being changed from clerk three to a magisterial district court administrator specialist. Part of what we're doing is going around and looking at these, this generic title, clerk one, clerk two, clerk three, clerk four, which 20, 25 years ago made sense, but which today doesn't make sense.
And job descriptions and expectations are being changed to match new titles.
Absolutely, absolutely, because the duties have changed, that's really part of what this is all about.
I mean, think 20 years, what their duties have evolved into.
And again, I'm, I know we're not voting yet, but I want to say this on the record, I would be voting no because there are others that are still waiting.
Yeah. Also, the other thing, if I could encourage you to vote yes instead, it would help us to move along with the process. We can't necessarily do all of them on the same day, but we.
And I fully agree with what you said about the deserving, the need, I'm not disputing that.
Right, we did the treasurer's office, right?
Commissioner, I think what's important to include, too, is that these actions were identified during the budget process when it came up for reorganizations, additional personnel, so everybody had an opportunity to do the same thing. It just so happened that we're working on these, and then as we get into the new year, we will continue to do the analysis and work on the others.
I do understand that, and I'm not arguing, it's just I'm not comfortable voting yes for some and not, while others are waiting.
And the key thing I emphasize every week, this is a giant elephant that has not been addressed in 34 years, but we can only do what's within the budget. That's the key thing, we can only spend what's within the budget, and we can't spend more than what's within the budget because, you know, in my opinion, taxes, raising taxes is not an option, at least with me, so.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Just so we didn't get lost.
Aye.
Aye.
No, yes.
Okay, three to one.
No. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Is that it, I think, for salary board?
I think we'll go back to the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, we'll adjourn the salary board this time, reconvene the Commissioners' public meeting. TDA actions, Jess?
Yep, we have a few TDA actions just to wrap up, changing the clerk three position, the title, to the magisterial district court administrative specialist, also changing the following individuals, their title and their pay grade, Stacy Aldinger, Carleen Bauer, Morgan Schuler, Michelle Cuff, Erica Grimes, Erica Heeman, Yvonne Heller, Sophie Lauer, Mara Person, Lindsay Sowers, and Tanya Smith. We're also changing the clerk four job title to the court supervisor title, and that will affect Amy Green, Danielle Erga, Dorothy Harland, Sophie Miller, and Catherine Winder. And then we are changing the title for Michelle Person to the lead supervisor, pay grade seven position, and again, all of these will be effective for January 8th pay period.
We don't need to put on the change of the officers identified on the draft court order as special county detectives for the TDA?
No.
Okay.
They're just.
The positions, okay.
Yeah, they're special.
Oh, they're special, right, they're not part of our.
They're not on the TDA.
Right, they're not on the TDA, right, okay, thanks.
Okay, I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All three say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Okay, moving on to action items, long-awaited 2023 budget approval, Steve, 7.1 and 7.2.
Morning, Steve. Morning, Commissioners. I have the final 2023 Lake Humming County budget that I'd like to present for approval today. There has not been any changes to this budget since it has been up for public display. The projected revenues of the budget are at $105.7 million, projected expenditures on the 2023 budget are $138.9 million, results in a $33.2 million budget deficit. This deficit is mostly a result of expenses that will occur in 2023, but we utilize Act 13 or ARPA monies that were received in prior years. The county general fund balance is approximately $25 million, at sort of its low point of the year as we're awaiting the real estate tax revenues to start coming in here in the next few months. Act 13 has a balance of approximately $24.5 million, and the ARPA fund balance has approximately $21 million. The budget does not reflect any increase to county property tax, and the mileage rate that is being proposed with this budget will remain at 6.5.
Okay, I have a motion.
Well, the only motion, I would make a motion to insert into the budget the cost to recount, and if it turns out to be less, we can insert it as a contingency or insert it as a line item, I would say that we put that in the budget.
Well, we have the contingency right now, you know?
Do we have blank?
Well, here, we'll have 20, because we're not conducting until non-January, so it'll be in 2023.
Okay, so we already have that money in there, if we need to.
Yeah.
How much do we have, how much do we have found for contingency?
I'm going to say 325.
I could say it's like 320 to 350,000.
Yeah.
So there's 320 to 350,000 in contingency?
Right.
And that would be used for the vote recount?
I'm going to argue that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, we either have to, no, I'm not saying we're going to use all that, but what I'm saying.
We're just reassigning our assets to a particular task, we're not, we also have to see if there are enough people to complete the task.
Right.
All right? I mean, I can't.
But logic tells you that if you take.
I can't, in good common sense, say if we only have, I'm not having a department using some of its employees for two or three months because we only have 10 people, that's not going to happen.
Right.
So let's make that clarification, and then if we don't have enough people to do the recount, then I will get clarification on volunteers, okay? Because I don't believe, it's a statute, I believe you can, you must train them and make sure that we have control and custody of those ballots that we will eventually throw away because they're past due. So, I mean, I don't see this as a major.
Well, the thing is, we should, we should, everything we do, we budget, every time something comes up for a vote.
That's our personnel, it's budgeted.
No, everything we do, they say, is this a budgeted item?
It is budgeted.
Right, well. Well, what, what I'm trying to say is it's not in a line item budget.
Well, you, you do different tasks, the sheriff does different tasks as well.
You're saying, yeah, you're saying that we have these employees, right, I get that. But my point is that logic tells us that if we have thirty to forty employees who can leave their job for three weeks.
Well, I don't believe that.
I know, I know, and that's where we're gonna get into overtime because the work that people don't do when they're there, so you take someone out of the office for two weeks, they're gonna go back to the office, they're gonna end up having to pay overtime.
But that needs to be discussed.
That's right. All right, but it's either one or the other, either you have enough, either people have enough work.
Or we're allowed to use volunteers.
Well, no, I wasn't gonna say that, I was gonna say is that people either. I don't know if it's a good idea to use volunteers, but that's a whole nother kettle of fish. In any event, using volunteers is gonna make it harder for the director of elections to get.
Are you saying you don't trust your constituents?
I'm saying that something as important as handling ballots should be done in a situation where people have a commit, you know, have more of a commitment to an organization like they do as an employee because it's also a supervisory question. But looming all over, over all of this, if we decide to use volunteers, you then have to train all those volunteers. And that means that this Department of Justice case, which is out there, is not going away. And our director of elections is spending time making a PowerPoint on, very interesting PowerPoint, very, great job he did, but not one that he should be working on when the Department of Justice is telling us that there are polling places that are not in compliance, that's, and so. But anyway, all of this has to do, is the budget. All I'm suggesting and moving, I'm making a motion, that we put into the budget two hundred thousand dollars to cover the cost of recounting an election. If we don't spend it, that's great. If we do spend it, then at least we've budgeted for it. But the responsible thing to do is to put it in the budget as an item like we would everything else. So I have a motion on the floor.
And, and I, I personally don't think we should inflate a budget when we already have money in the contingency. That's already in the budget, then why inflate, inflate a budget?
Plus, I don't.
Well, contingency is supposed to be for things.
On our agenda today, either, which should be public.
What's that? We're voting on the budget, it's absolutely on the agenda. But the point is, a contingency by definition is supposed to be for contingent items, items that you didn't necessarily plan for. A budget is the item you planned for, we know we're gonna do this, and therefore we should at least budget for it. Well, I hope I could get a second to the motion.
Well, you won't get one from me.
Well, I'll second it, we'll vote on it.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
And the reason I have a nay is because they are already in the budget for twenty twenty-three.
I would agree with that statement. All right, so, motion to adopt the twenty twenty-three budget. And motion.
I, I, I will make that motion and plan.
I'll second. Discussion. Well.
I, I would like, I'd like to comment. This is a very, very difficult year, to say the least. With, with all the challenges that face this county. You know, we, we put a lot of extra time. We've asked for a lot of extra help from internal staff to, you know, paid consultants to get us through this very difficult time. The utilization of other organizations such as, for the county, such as C D C O G and STEP to get us through deadlines that, you know, when, when the federal government gives the county twenty-two million dollars, right? And you're tasked on how you're gonna make sure you comply with the requirements. How and when are you gonna disperse? And really, didn't give us adequate guidance to start, okay? It is very difficult. And I want to thank all those organizations and our internal staff for the help that was needed. It's, to Steve, you've done a tremendous job for us. And I'm not sure if we get through the process without you coming over from our mess and helping out. To Carissa, and to, to Michelle, Heather, to everyone that stuck with us and, and, and that, that stuck with us during these tough times. We can't thank you enough. And I mean, this was the most challenging year I've ever seen as a commissioner. And I want to express my gratitude and appreciation to everyone that, that stood by us to, to get us through it.
Any further comments?
No, it's, it's been, it's been a great job that you guys have done. And part of this is us making sure we figure out how to retain staff so that we don't wind up in crisis situations. And for the public to understand that when, when we can't retain staff, it affects everything we do. So when you see wages being changed or benefits being changed, it's to be, try to be competitive so that we, we can try to keep staff. We lost some very long-term employees in the budget and finance office, but it doesn't, it's not something that hasn't happened all over. In fact, someone told me that the budget director is one of the most sought-after positions.
Yeah. R H Director calls us yesterday, assistant one, said if you get on websites that, looking for CFOs and, and the budget finance directors everywhere.
Right. And, and then the other, the other factor that we face is that we have a lot of long-term employees who are near retirement. So that some of these people who left are people who retired and they've been here for twenty years or however long. And so we're sort of facing that challenge. But, you know, it is, it is a budget that doesn't raise taxes and it, other than, and generally I would say it's a responsible budget with my colleagues being irresponsible and not budgeting the vote recount, but that's their choice. I certainly wouldn't vote against an entire budget because they didn't put that in, although it's tempting to. But, you know, the, I hope the public understands that, you know, apparently ninety-nine percent of the time we do budget things, but sometimes when we want to avoid taking accountability for the money we spend, we don't budget it. We let it get buried, apparently, the board is, so, in overtime. But anyway, it is, it is a good day and we thank you, Mr. Sims, and we thank you, Carissa, and Michelle, and the other folks in budget and finance.
Steve, I can't thank you enough, you come over and, and you're, you're here from six, six AM to nine PM, and you've done a phenomenal job. Carissa, she's been a great team player, she's worked long hours. Michelle, you've come over from, you know, she transferred to sheriff's office. The sheriff has allowed you to come over and help out, too. Again, it shows you how departments work with each other to get the job done. And she's been a huge asset, and without these key players, things won't be getting done. I've said it before, I'll say it again, our county employees are, are most important asset in county government. They're dedicated, they work hard, and they truly care about what they do. And without them, the job doesn't get done, it's bottom line.
I think it would be reminiscent of us not to say during the process that elected officials of this county has worked together, for the most part, okay? In, in solving a number of the issues, okay? We've had good input from every elected official. They understand, they understand the circumstances, not only to meet the needs of their departments, but overall, they understand the, the challenges that the commissioners faced during this time as well.
And we see that with the prison.
I want to thank them as well.
The prison board has a lot of those elected officials on it. And, and you saw that coming together, the teamwork, and the ideas that were being thrown out to try to solve the problem. So thank you. So with that said, we have a motion. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. And again, to budget with no taxes, which is the most important thing.
So next, seven point two, I have four resolutions, do we want to do all those in, at once, or do we want to do those individually?
Let's do those individually.
Okay. Under item, action item seven point two, the first, first note is to, is to request the approval of resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-five, which will formally adopt the twenty twenty, the twenty twenty-three budget.
Motion?
I'll move to approve resolution twenty-two twenty-five.
I will second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Next is request to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-six to adopt the county's five-year capital plan.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
Next is request to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-seven to adopt the predetermined ratio for real estate tax assessment at a hundred percent.
I'll move to approve twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
And finally, the request to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-eight to adopt the real estate tax rate at six point five mils, which represents sixty-five cents on each one hundred dollars in assessed value.
Can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to seven point three. Commissioners seeking your approval for the ratification of an agreement letter with Nurney Page, Penderlin, and Hall. This is for twenty twenty-three budgeted funds, and this is for conflict attorney services.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
Okay, seven point four is the addition of, the request for approval for Brett Boz to be appointed to the Lycoming Planning, Planning Commission Board. Since you guys discussed this, I've got some information that Planning and the Commission did in fact have all the applications, and this is the individual that they would have recommended.
Okay. Okay. All right. We have a motion then.
I'll be honest with you, off the top of my head, I'm trying to recall the other applications.
Well, they said they had them all.
We didn't, we didn't.
Well, I, I don't know.
Are you speaking to Shannon?
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Speaking to.
You don't know who the other applicants were?
Cindy.
I mean, can you think?
Oh, I, I.
Provides all the applications when they come in there.
So Cindy provides all the applications to the planning commission.
Right.
And they, she says they reviewed them all. And this is their recommendation.
We have every app, and that's the person name.
I'll make a motion then.
Well, just as a formal matter, we don't necessarily have, just, I mean, obviously we respect the planning commission and what they do, but we also typically, we discuss among ourselves who.
I, I totally agree, I mean, I, I agree. I saw this just recently.
Yeah.
Well, then I'll make a motion table till next week.
Okay.
I'll not be here next week.
Can you, can you questions clarify next week?
Yeah.
Well, the three of us need to talk.
I'm glad, I'm just for a review.
Well, we'll do it for two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, they don't have their meetings over the third.
Right.
Third Thursday of the month, so it's still plenty of time to.
And this is by no means.
No reflection on the.
Brett.
Exactly, and it's no reflection on the planning commission, it's just our, ultimately our responsibility is to appoint the member.
And it is the biggest commission, or most important commission that sits in this county.
Okay. I have a motion table. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we'll table to the January twelfth meeting.
Okay, table for two weeks. Seven point five, Commissioners seeking your approval on the price proposals and sales agreement with supply, supply source for the new sheriff's office furniture. This is a twenty twenty-three budgeted item. The two different proposals should, so two sets of costs, one for seventy-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. That's for the lower level, or so, level one. And then eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, twenty-seven cents, and that is for the main office. For a total of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-five cents. This is below the budgeted amount, or approved budget amount for twenty twenty-three.
So a few, a few weeks ago, the sheriff approached me about getting this done. We've had several meetings with supply source, Bob's been phenomenal with supply source. They have gone over to the office build out and with several of the administration over there to get this done. The reason why there's this key to get this done by the end of the year was there was a price increase next year. And I said to the sheriff, I said, we have to have this done and on the agenda by the end of the year because we're not gonna pay a price increase. So he worked diligently with us and his staff, and they did what they needed to do to get this proposal to date, so. I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Yeah, and Matt, you have a picture up in your office of an attorney sitting.
Oh, yeah.
So when was that taken? An attorney sitting on the floor.
That was back.
In front of a, a cell with eighteen people in it.
Twenty fifteen.
This is going back to twenty fifteen. And, and I bring this up because when we started to make these moves, it was because of the sheriff. The sheriff needed space, but it had to work in reverse. So everyone else got their, their departments redone, okay? Reorganized and updated and moved, and it ended up being the sheriff was the last one. And so this is, this is seven years in the making. And I want to thank him for his patience. And he's also an individual that really does care about almost every department. He advocates for everyone. So it's well-deserved sheriff. And thanks for your service.
The courthouse is fifty-two years old. Can you mute your phone, please? The courthouse is fifty-two years old, and I spent thirty-two years in that building. And I worked next door to that office and with that office for all those years. You have two holding cells. You have a female, she goes to one holding cell, that means all the guys go in the other holding cell. And there's times when there'd be fifteen, sixteen inmates in that holding cell, waiting for hearings. And I know that picture, and I've seen those attorneys sit on the floor outside, and they're trying to talk to a client about their individual case. There's no confidentiality, there's nothing. So I believe it's maybe one of the very few offices where there's never been any walls really moved because the offices could be reconfigured over the years, and some were expanded, some were eliminated. Sheriff's office was always that stable corner, and you couldn't move it. So as the staff has grown with the needs in the, in the county, their space has not grown. And they need, they need the space. The, the holding cells, the doors and cells look like they're out of the.
The, a, a western movie or something.
Yeah, it looks like, like Matt Dillon's holding cells.
They're about five by eight, right, Sheriff, the, the holding cells are little bigger?
Yes, sir.
About what?
They're about six by, they're about six by twelve.
Okay, six by twelve.
Those doors, those doors could go to a museum, I believe.
Well, actually, there's only two places where those doors have been seen, here and at the law enforcement museum.
Right, is there a toilet in the holding cell?
Yeah, they have that.
Right, so there's a toilet in there. It's six by twelve, so imagine your bathroom, which is typically five by eight, a typical bathroom, throw four more feet out, take the bathtub, leave the toilet. Throw four more feet out, take the bathtub, leave the toilet, and then pack eighteen people into it.
And unfortunately, we didn't have enough money in the budget for his office, so he's moving into this film. Sheriff.
Yeah.
I'll take it. I think any improvement we can get.
So Sheriff?
Appreciate your support.
Any other comments?
No, I appreciate your support. Uh, it's been a long time. We're in, you know, we've been operating in four different locations. We're almost two and a half years now. Uh, and it's, it's a challenge when, you know, if you picture any, any individual office in the county being in four specifically different locations, uh, communication is a challenge. Just day-to-day operations, just getting paperwork, receiving paperwork. Uh, you know, twenty-ten, twenty-ten, we received paperwork in a form of PFAs. We received two hundred in twenty-ten. That's a lot of paperwork back and forth from the courts to our office, to the deal, to deputies, back to the office, back to the courts. And you take two hundred in twenty-ten, and we did over five hundred PFAs last year. And the volume of work just has, it's multiplied two-fold, three-fold. So being in four separate offices is an exceptional challenge. So we're anxious, uh, to get back to, uh, it won't be one location. Um, you didn't mention, Commissioner Mester, but, uh, I mentioned it. We'll actually have the admin offices on the third floor, and we will have our entire deputy operation and our cells all together, uh, which is a recommendation that Commissioner Sarah had long ago, uh, when we met back seven or eight years ago. What about moving down to lower level? I don't call it the basement. I call it sub-level one. And at that time, it didn't sound appealing. There's not, there's really not an option. There's only so much space left after everybody else took their space. So we're going to have the operations side of our business in sub-level one. So while the administrative offices upstairs in sub-level one will have the, the cells and the deputy operation, which actually will give us additional security for inmates that we're housing in the courthouse. So again, I thank you, Mr. Sork, and only getting to this point by helping us to get across the face line. And Director George is working on it very diligently. I appreciate you for keeping it on, and also like you have it, um, so we don't let it stall. We can get back to business.
Sheriff, how many revised plans did you, you come up with before this point?
Uh, we started, we started four years ago, Tony. We started, uh, about five years ago. COVID, we slowed down, but we, we gave Director George, I think we're on a thirty-fourth or thirty-fifth design, uh, plan to make it fit and make it work. You know?
Is he serious? Are you serious, Sheriff?
I hope you're never a wedding planner.
Yeah.
We'll drive the bride nuts.
We didn't want to build it for yesterday or today. We tried to build it for tomorrow. I don't know how long I'm going to be in the courthouse. Um, you know, if we're there another thirty, forty, fifty years, we wanted to be able to build it to accommodate people. The greatest challenge was the fact that we don't file a C. If you came into my office to get a civil complaint because you were being sued civilly, you would walk into the old office, and everybody in the office, including every inmate, would hear your business. And that's what we have tried to eliminate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay. All favor say aye?
Aye.
So carried.
Okay, seven point six through seven point twelve. Jason?
Yes, sir. Free Commissioners.
Morning, Jason.
Commissioners, free approval is a two-year professional service agreement with Professional Petroleum Service Company. They do our preventive maintenance inspection repairs to our fuel island system. Your approval.
I'll, I'll second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Commissioner, seven point seven, uh, is an amendment to an agreement that we have with Pace Analytical Services. Pace does our testing. Uh, we have to have our compositions of our leachate, our water testing and all that, and this is a contract, uh, two-year extension to the already four-year contract, so seeking your approval.
Motion?
Second?
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Who made the motion?
The next, I believe the next four are waste disposal agreements. The first, seven point eight, is a waste disposal agreement with Hughesville, Wolf Township, Sewer Authority, um, just the contracts that they can bring their sludge to us.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? So carried.
Seven point nine is the same with the authority of, um, town of Bloomsburg.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Third, seven point ten is the disposal agreement with Queensport Sanitary Authority for their sludge.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
And lastly, seven eleven is the waste disposal agreement with Mifflinburg Borough.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? So carried.
Thank you. Lastly, seven twelve is an amendment with the agreement that we have with Sunoco for fuel. We have had a, uh, three-year agreement with Sunoco on fuel pricing. Uh, this is amendment extends the contract for another three years. Pricing structure for our diesel and our gasoline is attached to an oil price service petroleum, um, rack price for Harrisburg. So it's a fluctuating number, um, and that's the only way we were really able to attach it to a contract so that we had a known, uh, increment that had moved. The differential increase went from, uh, three, three cents basically to five cents per gallon for delivery cost, so we're looking probably an extra a hundred and, for debris, but they're willing to lock in another three years for the contract.
Can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? So carried. Thank you, Jason.
Okay, and seven point one three, Matt Long?
Morning, Commissioners and Director. I'm seeking approval for the light twenty-three agricultural preservation fund. The county has historically always committed fifty thousand, plus the growing green penalties this year of six thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. For a total of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. The state typically provides, uh, almost a four to one math, they provide two hundred thousand dollars for this. Currently, the aggravate, the agricultural preservation program has preserved, I under. Eight, at eighty-five evens, evens, they're looking at just over eleven thousand acres. It's a very well-received program. We're waiting list for the program. There's about fifteen people deep currently.
Okay, I motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
So, so carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, public comment?
Yeah.
Commissioner, can I ask you?
I have, I have something. Um, we have been in talks with the city about, um, them relocating their offices, possibly to county facilities. We started this process before COVID, and they come over and toured, um, space at the Third Street Plaza, and then COVID hit, and it kind of died in the water. They moved their offices here, I think it was about approximately a year ago, and we reached back out to them, and several of the council members came over and walked through the, uh, Third Street Plaza again. And, uh, so if you notice, they have in their budget, they have put rent money, um, in for the second half of the year, because they want to relocate. Uh, they're not sure about City Hall at this point, um, but we've offered them space at the Third Street Plaza. So, um, they're planning to negotiate with us going into twenty twenty-three, um, about possibly bringing space over there, either on the second or fourth floor. The second floor would be across from the Wellness Center, and the fourth floor is wide open. Uh, so we'll be in discussions with them, um, coming into next year. Personally, I think this is a, a great opportunity for, for us and the city. It, it shows, uh, regionalization. It shows government agencies working together to reduce cost. Everything would be centrally located. Um, where taxpayers could come in and take care of their city and county business in one location. And it shows, um, um, that we can work together. But the bigger thing is, I think it, it shows on the government level that we can do regionalization and work together in putting things in the same building. We've also talked to them about, if they do do this move, uh, we could possibly share HR services, share IT services down the line. Uh, they could maybe even become a partner in the Wellness Center with us to reduce, um, the cost to their employees and, and taxpayers. Uh, so these are all things we'll be talking to the city about going into next year, but I think it's a great opportunity, um, to centralize government in a downtown area, uh, for the taxpayers and help reduce costs from, from our end and their end.
The mayor, the mayor came also with us on the tour, uh, before, was it before COVID? But, but the important thing is, it's obviously up to the, the mayor and city council, but we've tried to stress throughout that there are no strings attached, meaning they don't have to sign a five-year lease or a three-year lease. We would ask them to, you know, give us a ninety-day notice they want to leave or something, but they could come and see, or even less than ninety, but there's nothing like there is going to cause them to have to commit. I guess one perspective on it is they're in a little bit of a crisis because of the problems in the old City Hall and the problems with whether or not they actually own any of the buildings that they thought they owned.
Well, they're paying RVT rent.
Right, they're paying RVT rent. This would be an opportunity for them to, to rent at a very reasonable cost space that is not going to require them to make a long-term commitment, but that if we, if we did, if they wanted to, they could also do that too. So we hope they'll give it a lot of consideration, and if there are any questions, they certainly can ask us. But there's no pressure on them to, to have to stay. This is not a traditional landlord-tenant situation.
I want to interrupt you for a second. I want to thank the Web Weekly, Larry Stouts here, Weekly. Um, we're at the end of the year here, and Pat Prowsley's here almost every week with Sun Gazette, where she's online. We want to thank you for their, their coverage of the meeting, so.
We see Larry about to leave, which is why we want to thank him before he goes.
Thank you, Larry, and, and thank you, Pat, for your coverage.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, so anyway, that's just, I just wanted to make that, that known to them, that there's no pressure here, and that it's designed really both as a way to help them and also to help the, the taxpayers. And if it turns out that they love it and they want to stay longer, that's great too, but if it turns out that they really would, they find that they actually own one of the buildings, um, that there's a question about, you know? At least it would, it would relieve them from the pressure of having to make very expensive changes to City Hall just to get back in there. I mean, if, obviously, they're the elected officials for the city, and if they determine they wanted to do that in the long term, it's up to them, but we hold this out as an olive branch to help them.
Uh, I'd just like to add that, you know, I want to thank Cindy Dawson, uh, up in our office. We've, we've been short a person in our office for how many months now?
Over a year.
And with over.
Thirteen, thirteen months.
Yeah, and with, with all the rights he knows, and with, you know, our schedules, uh, she's done a fantastic job for us, and I want to recognize her that, that, you know, because of that, I also want to recognize my two colleagues. Over this year, we, we've had some trying times, there's no question. Everything seems to be grueling. Everything has to cost money. Uh, there, there were fires almost every weekly, and, uh, we hung in there, right? We had our disagreements, but I think we respect each other. I respect the chairman of this board immensely, uh, for holding it together, and, and to my colleague, Rick Maravito, he, he's, uh, is the best interest of this county. Sometimes he's, you know, but in all seriousness. He, he does a fantastic job for the, the taxpayers of Lightcoming Collie, uh, County, and, uh, I'm grateful that I've served with you guys.
Thank you, Lightpoint.
Yeah, I want to, I want to acknowledge the two of you also, and each of us brings a different perspective to things, and that's why they must have set this up with three people. Sometimes it seems like it would be a heck of a lot easier if one of us could just
Dictator.
make the decision we want made, but, uh, that's not how the, uh, the government is set up. I, I really think it's great that you recognize Cindy Dawson also. Cindy is, is one of the quiet folks back in the trenches who's working away, um, and Mr. McDermott, who's been around.
You, 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 uh, categorized Cindy as quiet?
No, what I mean is, no, Cindy's very good at telling us she got two minutes before this meeting starts, and, and it's incredibly helpful to have a person who keeps things, uh, going for us. And also, I do want to thank Mr. McDermott, because, um, you know, twenty-four seven, he's available to all of the department heads, um, and, uh, and does a lot of work that people never see because he's doing it, um, at hours that, uh, we are asleep or we are, are out. So I do want to thank you, Mr. McDermott.
Thanks, you're welcome. And, uh, I want to thank both my colleagues. We work well together. We have our differences from time to time, but overall, we, we work well together, and we're getting things done, and that's what the taxpayers want. So we got a lot more to do, and a lot of things going on, and, and, uh, in twenty twenty-three, we can bring them to four and get them accomplished. And, uh, Greg McDermott, thank you for your assistance and guidance, and the city also, Cindy keeps us on those upstairs. And, uh, she's very, very dedicated. Even, even when she's not feeling well, she's working.
Yes, yes. And there's a very important meeting tomorrow night that we have to announce, which is that at six o'clock in this room, we are holding the public meeting, which has been advertised, to discuss the compensation for the four years.
Twenty twenty-four on.
Twenty twenty-four on, and by, by statute, we have to have a public meeting at night, and we're fulfilling that obligation tomorrow night, six o'clock here. Uh, it'll be livestreamed also, and, uh, it'll set the compensation for, uh, commissioners, controller, treasurer, sheriff.
Register recorder.
Register recorder, D, not the DA.
The donter.
The donter.
All of our offices from year twenty-four through twenty-seven.
Right.
Okay, public comment? From the audience, any online?
I do.
Yes?
Uh, continuation from Thomas Adams. So I just backed up a little bit, took the last line of context. Silencing us by color of law, twisting the strange contortions law via PA Department of State, working with taxpayer funds to manipulate their statist will over the people. The manipulation of law by going through the judiciary is what our founders fought against. The laws must be followed as written in context and time in which constructed. Anything can be dismantled through ignorance and disregard of truth. I was one of three signatories of a petition to parrot the votes in one of the county's wards. The petition was denied because Department of State lawyers twisted the election code dealing with individual war issues. The petition was submitted with proper information, with all burden of liability being met. Petition being denied is just, is a destruction of justice, and the judge working in concert with the Department of State across the state, subjected under the will of corrupt and dirty bureaucrats and elected officials, basically calling the eyewitness a liar and telling myself and the other signatory we have no rights to question and, or, and our judgment of a person's character is invalid because the high and mighty statist know better. Maybe the petition should be presented to the sheriff, not the court. I take great offense to being called a liar, and my judgment is worthless in the eyes of an all-powerful state. The DOS is alarmed by the amount of these presented in the past election. The reason the cronies fought this, in their words, in a nutshell, they didn't like people using election code to check their individual warrants. If the small fires are dealt with, the chances for a huge issue of the count for a county will be far less. Unless there are actual problems revealed, nip it in the bud. I'm not certain of the exact authority, uh, denying the, the petition because it was done in chambers with no public ask, access permitted. Even though I was a signatory, the judge, judges, should have thrown it out unless the signers were shown. the signers were shown to not want and vote in that ward and poll, or the signer's character, one or all, can be shown untrustworthy of a questionable state. Once again, we have a state all too eager to twist laws, destroy morality, and a common sense application of law in, in God-fearing, which is constitutional, manner to have a decent and safe society. Thank you for your work. I hope we all have to live to fight another day. Happy New Year. Merry Christmas. Thank you for, for your work too.
And thank you. Any other comments? Hearing them, our next meeting will be tomorrow late at six o'clock to address the salaries for elected officials for the years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven, and thank you for attending. Please, sure.
I brought you here at Lance Callender's.
All right.
For anybody who wants.
Thank you, absolutely. Appreciate it. Hope it's on our wall. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. I, we have an meeting scheduled with you guys on the twenty-seventh.
Oh, on the twenty, oh, okay.
See you later.
Bye-bye.
Happy New Year.
Yep. Happy New Year.